So we are short two board members that supposedly, I guess, are both on their way. But we'll get started anyways. With us tonight in the audience, we have Darlene Abadacola, who's the town assessor. Paul Michon is our new town supervisor. Welcome. Dave Reynolds from the town board. Rick Sherman, our highway superintendent. Joe Booth from codes. We have a new assistant codes officer, Eric Barkum. Welcome, Eric.
Thank you.
And town attorney Herb Cully.
She said it.
I said it. Starting on my leftover hand of board is Fred Keen, Iron Elias. I'm Randy Bogart. Our recording secretary is Dory Shaw, John Machos, and Terry Tissot. We have two items on the agenda tonight. What I'll do is have Dory read each application. And what I would say is bring up anything that you think is pertinent to your particular application, whether it's letters of support, photos, diagrams, anything that you think is going to make your case. At that point, we'll open it up. The board will have some questions. After that, we'll open it up to the audience who may have some comments on your particular application. I would ask that you direct any comments to the board, not to the applicant. At that point, we'll close. We hope to make a decision on each one of these applications tonight, pending anything out of the ordinary. Okay?
Randy, you want advising maybe four of the five here?
Yeah.
Or they can reschedule.
Right. So for both the applicants, you would need, since we are down two board members at this point, you would need four.
Four.
Four out of the five in order to get your application approved.
Yep.
Okay? So, or you can elect to proceed, or you can elect to wait till the next meeting when we have a full board.
Sure. Can we just postpone maybe five, 10 minutes if they're on their way? Do they have the choice to wait five, 10 minutes?
We could do that.
Why don't you ask the first applicant?
And the first applicant is, let's ask the first applicant.
Now I can pick one up. We should put it on the table up there.
Yes. We have no objection to get a full. If they're on their way, there's no sense either repeating it or having them miss it. So we have no problem with that.
Okay. All right. We'll give it to quarter after.
Watching the boat. I was watching the boat.
Oh, maybe he fell asleep.
Yeah, I was on the couch. And then I went, why isn't he going?
I like this. It looks good.
I started going and then moved off.
Yeah, I know. I saw, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
You see Doug Neff pass away?
I did that.
Yeah. Good ballplayer. He's an all-star. Baseball pitcher, left-handed pitcher.
Yeah. I took a movie there.
I thought it was pretty good. Did you like it?
I thought it was slow.
It was slow, but I mean, I liked the story.
It was, uh...
Great cast.
A great ca... Good story, right?
Yeah. I agree with you.
The end made me feel good, you know? It was like they did the right thing.
So great character, the post.
The post, yeah.
Tom Hanks and Meryl Streep and the character actors, you know? It was amazing.
They did good. But it's just, it was like it just never moved fast. It was always like, I always feel, I hope that's just not how Hollywood plays it, but to have Meryl Streep's character or person actually do that and say, "I'm going against the campaign," and go against everybody, the whole board, and say, "Take this discussion, maybe we can come back." It was huge. That was. It's guts, you know? It's guts.
I'm very excited. Just wait, just wait 10 minutes. Plus it'd be harder for the applicant, too.
Are you doing anything after this?
Well, we usually talk about this before, yes, to show ourselves. For us, we might, we might decide. We might try to get those four people. Even though I didn't want to, oh, we started doing this, Frank, or something, or an artist or something. I like the...
We haven't done that in a while.
I haven't. I actually, you're starting to... I used to see that.
I have confidence in you. I said 10 minutes.
I was wrong. Good. Sometimes.
I didn't have... Oh, I don't know. It's a little...
Another one. I was a slow driver, but I got... You want to share? You got yours? Sure. Sure. First one is the Frank period.
I'll be doing the one with the right-of-way.
Yeah. Yes, we got it.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Coming from certain? More than 17, or?
No. No.
You sure?
Yeah. Yeah.
You know, on the street.
Sarah, I could have been, but we never... My neighbor's been moaning about this, takes a lot, how it affects people.
Would Randy go out there with a flashlight, Herb?
I would.
Wouldn't he go out there with a flashlight?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Derek? Didn't he go out there with a roll-up freezer? No. Especially the...
Well, he was in the car freaking out. We took that course. It's like we were telling you to tell you.
Oh, wonderful. Okay. Well, she sent me a list who was there. I just wanted to bring your thoughts.
It's ridiculous.
Some shit, some shit.
Keep that in mind. You might be down again. We got to upgrade that shit.
So we sent the letter out again for 2018.
You're gonna start?
We're just gonna start.
Yeah. You still have to give them the option because...
I know. We still give you the option we have. We're missing one board member, so...
I guess, I mean, if you talk to her, I have no objection getting started to get everybody else moving, but I mean, if someone's on their way, I don't want to begrudge them, you know, hearing it anyway. So I guess...
I don't know.
Okay. Then I guess I'll get started. So we just keep everything moving here. And on the heels of that, I guess I will start with, I want to make a sincere apology to the board and to Attorney Cully for last month's issue. Not an excuse, but the rationale, I had a procedure done that morning at the hospital, and I would have sworn on a stack of bibles after coming out of anesthesia that the meeting wasn't seven, when in fact it was clearly at six. So I apologize for that. But I could have sworn it was at seven, so that's, it was totally my fault, and I apologize for that. So I just wanted to make you aware of that.
That's Patrick Quinn, right?
Yes.
So the director?
I'm here representing Frank and Laura Courier for the property on 210 Higbee Road. The issue revolves around violation of 118-80 of the New Hartford Town Law stating that building permits required for the installation of a fence. Obviously, our issues are sort of two-pronged, and I'll just make it brief. According to New Hartford Codes Department and its frequently asked questions, it states right on the website that what can be done without a permit is to make ordinary repairs with like or similar materials to restore original conditions that do not affect the structural features or involve the installation or extension of electrical or plumbing systems. Obviously, our two-pronged question to the board is, the work that was done at 210 Higbee was a repair. It was not an installation of a fence, and I'll explain the rationale for that. If in fact, after having that discussion, the planning board still believes it was an installation, we believe that the facts of the case warrant a variance due to several factors. Very briefly, on or about May 14th, 2014, Frank and Linda Courier purchased a property at 210 Higbee Road in town of New Hartford. At that time, the fence in question, which is a split-rail fence approximately four feet in height, was on the property. That fence has been on the property since at least 1997. I can testify to that because I live across the street from him. And I moved in in 1997, and that split-rail fence was there when I got there. So it's been there for at least 20 some odd years at this point. And on or about...
In exactly the same place?
Exactly. Yeah. Same footprint. You know, the work that was done to repair, that is the same exact footprint. You wouldn't know it was a different fence if you didn't know it was a different fence. I mean, it was the same style, same, you know, same everything. I mean, they just took the old poles out that were damaged, slipped them in the same hole, so none of the footprint had changed one iota. But what basically happened, what necessitated this, was on November 3rd of 2016, due to the malfeasance of a third party, and there is a report in the police department, New Hartford, a gentleman under the influence on Higbee Road, traveling down Higbee, somehow amazingly, got so much speed that he went over the culvert, smashed through the fence on Higbee, and then realized that he couldn't just turn around and drive back out the way he had come in, decided to drive across my client's lawn and escape, knocking out a portion of the fence on Bradley, because the house is on the corner of Higbee and Bradley. So it was damaged in two significant areas. So obviously, my clients knew, Hartford Town Codes says, "Look, you know, your fence must be in repair at all times." Hired Gateway Fencing to do the repairs, to fix not only the slats that were broken, but the slats next to it that might have had a little structural integrity issues. Those were done around 1116. And no permit was gotten at that time because it was a repair. They had no intention of replacing. They didn't wake up that morning saying, "We want a new fence." They woke up that morning seeing hubcaps and, you know, pieces of fender and pieces of what used to be their fence in their lawn. So that was really what necessitated the work that got done there at that point. Like I say, there are still sections of fence, original fence still on the property, the Bradley side that didn't get damaged. There is still original fencing there. That has not been replaced, and it didn't need to be replaced. To my knowledge, both my client and myself, DPW has not at any time seen to have any issue with plowing or anything along those lines. They've been able to do so for the last 20 years. Last week, they came up and down Bradley, didn't seem to have any issues with the fence where it was located.
Why would they have an issue, excuse me?
Sure.
If that fence was permanently there and hasn't been moved, why last month did that have an issue that you just brought forth and not since 1997?
Well, that is exactly my point. My point is, there has been no issue for the last 20 years where the fence was, where the fence is, where it continues to be, has never been a source of contention with any government entity, whether it be DPW or county or whoever. No one has ever had any issue whatsoever with the fence, its placement, vision issues, blocking. It's a split-rail fence. There has been no, you know, nothing to my knowledge ever brought up at any time that says this fence is an issue of any...
Yeah, I completely understand that. You just made a point that it was last month or recently.
Well, I'm just saying that, just recently.
I was just wondering, was there a difference between recently?
No. I'm just testifying here that, you know, as I was doing my driveway, I saw them plow go up, I saw the plow go back. I didn't see them screaming obscenities at my neighbor or why this fence was in the way. That, you know, that's never been any sort of issue, you know, now or in the past.
Okay.
Section 118-80D states that any fence shall be allowed to extend within two feet of the front property line, provided they're open in style, not exceeding four feet in height. If fence height is within the four-foot requirement, for the fence line itself, the statute states it can be within two feet of the front property line. A strict reading of the statute would say, the front property line is where the property line ends. According to the deed, on record at the clerk's office, that property line runs to the middle of Higbee, runs to the middle of Bradley. All deeds run to the center line of dedicated roads. So arguably, it doesn't say that it runs to the county right-of-way line. If it wanted to say that, it could. It doesn't. It says front property line, which I would argue, this fence is well within two feet of the front property line as dedicated in the statute, 118-80D. Officer, for a practical issue, if you can picture, if you've gone by it, the Higbee Road portion, there's a fence, there's a giant culvert, there's Higbee Road. So certainly, I can't imagine any scenario whereby that fence, where there's a giant culvert in between it and the road, could cause any issues with the county or the township in any capacity. I don't think any plow is driving through the culvert to, you know, it is a natural barrier to this fence being an issue to anyone or anything. And as I stated before, the Bradley Road portion has never been an issue to date. Obviously, you know, the fence is the same footprint that it's been, always has been. Anything that got replaced, same style, same wood, same posts. So, like I say, nothing substantial is just fixed due to the malfeasance of a third party, in essence.
How many sections would you say of the fence actually got repaired?
Um, I haven't counted it, but I know the Higbee section was pretty well beat up. Another section of Bradley got hit, and that was two or three sections, or at least eight or nine probably by the time it was done, because there, some of it, by the time the fencing guys said, "Well, look, even though this one wasn't hit, it all got torqued to some degree." You know, obviously, the damage of it bent them and pushed them out of place, so they had to sink them, put some concrete in to make sure that they were on par with what they should be. So, like I say, that whole back section of Bradley, if you go by, that's the same split fence that had been there since Mrs. Watkins was there when I moved in 20 years ago. So that has not changed, you know, that back section in one bit. So, in essence, basically, like I say, what we're saying is, we would like the board to consider the fact that this was in fact, at all times a repair, not an installation. It was never their intent to do this. The only reason this ever came up was due to a third party damaging their property. If the board feels that's not the case, and hopefully the facts that we've discussed here will lend some credence to granting a variance at that point, because like I say, at all times, there was never an issue, hasn't been an issue with this fence, and the only reason it's come up is repairs were necessary. It had to be done. Thank you.
I have a question for Joe Booth, for Joe, not to you, sir. You know, we go back to the billboard applications back many years ago, when we used to have them across Route 5, and they were the old wooden structure. Park Avenue, I think, constructed them, and of course, they were up for many, many years prior to zoning laws and all that. We allow them to deteriorate to a point where some of those were rebuilt and some were not. Once they're obviously down and knocked to the ground, I guess they lose their variance and they have to come back. Is this the same case because a fence here is a corner lot, and it's a continuation of a fence? And I'm trying to get a determination to find out if we're running across that same scenario because of part of that billboard that fell down back in the 80s, we could reconstruct that because it actually didn't literally go down completely.
Yeah. You're referring to our non-conformity clause and the...
That's correct.
50% rule.
Yes.
When something is damaged or destroyed by 50% or more, it's not allowed to be replaced unless it's replaced to conform.
It could be wind damage, deterioration, and I'm just wondering here, because we're talking about a third party. It's, we should take that into consideration, I think, but if you want to get that into detail of what that is, can we do that maybe afterwards or anything like that? Or maybe we want to record it? Dory, did you get any of that information?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Joe. Appreciate that.
Randy, I wonder if you might read the letter from the county so that Ed could have an opportunity to respond to?
I've seen it. So I mean, you could read it if you want to put it out on the record.
Well, I think you should read it into the record.
But yes, I've read it. Thank you.
The United County Department of Public Works has received the above-mentioned area variance application, building permit application, related documentation to review in accordance with section 239F of the New York State General and Municipal Law. We offer filing counts. Pursuant to section 103A of the New York State Highway Law, the county superintendent of highways is obligated to remove obstructions from the bounds of the highway. This section of law also indicates that obstructions shall include fences that are erected within the bounds of the highway. The bounds of the highway is understood to be the county road right-of-way. The submitted claim indicates that the fence has been erected within the county road right-of-way. Therefore, this department cannot support or recommend approval of a building permit or an area variance in regards to Higbee Road right-of-way.
Joe, I have a question for you. The, how far back, in order to be in compliance, would you have to move a fence?
It can't go in front of the house.
Right.
It's a corner lot.
Mr. Quinn read an ordinance that really doesn't apply to this zone. That's, the ordinance he quoted was for agricultural zones. This is not an agricultural zone, fortunately, to be back to the front property line.
Yeah, I mean, the only reason I quoted that was that was the letter my client got from the town of New Hartford, saying that was what was not in compliance. So I'm only going off of the complaint that was issued to him. I've got it here.
Randy, we...
It was 118-80 was what was put, I mean, it's right here.
We've had this multiple times. You can't, you can't go in front of the front of the house.
What's the date on that letter?
That's under our new code, correct?
It's really interesting to hear that.
So does the old code just enter?
Well, I don't know if permits weren't even required back then, when that fence was built.
That's a good point. Because basically, this fence is really on county property.
Yeah.
And they want to put it back on county property, relieve on county property.
Well, it already is there.
And they want us to say it's okay?
They're asking you for a variance.
To put it on county property?
It's, it is, if the county had an issue with it, then they could have come in, well, '97, '98, '99, 2000. So I mean, this argument, they can't support or recommend it, I get it. They can't come out and potentially say, "Look, we can't support or recommend it." But at no time has the county ever come by, in the last 20 years that I've lived there, and decided that this was such a major issue on county-level standards that we need to start knocking this fence over. It's just, it's never happened. And had not this person under the influence of alcohol driven through this fence, and this fence had been the same fence it had been 20 years ago, that's been every single day, we wouldn't be sitting here having this conversation. This wouldn't be in front of this board because it's not an issue to anybody. The only reason it's an issue is that some repairs had to get done. So for the county to argue that somehow we are, you know, public enemy number one for putting this fence, it's been the same fence for 20 years, like I say, I understand they can't support it, they can't necessarily recommend it, but I think practical heads can prevail and say, "Look, this fence is the same fence and it's always been."
I'd like to see the date of that letter.
Yeah, I'm just trying to get my fingers on it while we're talking here.
Yeah.
Oh, here. There's the letter that I got, and it's basically the codes 118-1180. That's the letter that he got from the town of New Hartford.
It was dated February 2017.
Did it say who it's from?
Uh, yeah. The codes office enforcement, town of New Hartford.
Who signed the letter?
Thomas Rollins.
So the only reason I'm referencing that is that's what he was charged with, or whatever you want to call it.
Want to look at it?
The subject in violation. I can pass it if I can.
Can I touch the...
Oh, sure.
Your shirt?
Yeah.
Go ahead, John.
Oh, yeah. It's a little bit of me here, and I'm not an attorney, I mean, but if we give permission for somebody to do something on property that isn't ours, and there's an accident, are we liable in the end?
Sure.
Okay. So what, we're just saying, if I understand this correctly, if we give permission for this fence to go back up, and a year down the road or two years down the road, somebody comes down and gets killed by that, and they might start killing people, we're going to be liable?
We're going to be named in the lawsuit. Sure.
I mean, I just, I know it's highly, it's highly...
Do you have a question for the applicant?
Yeah. That's what I'm asking. That's what, well, no, that was for our attorney because I wanted to be sure.
All right. Anything for the applicant?
No.
Here. Do you have anything else for the applicant? Terry?
I guess I would say, as I always say, is that our, you know, we look for alternative ways so you wouldn't have to be here tonight. And I got to ask the question, did the, your client look for an alternative way that he would be in compliance?
I don't think he had any conception that he was out of compliance. I think all he did was wake up one morning to find part of his fence missing, knew he had to hire somebody, put the fence in the same place it was, as it was before, so it would be a working, complete fence. So I guess, yeah, the answer is, you can't fix not being in compliance if you don't know you're arguably not in compliance. He thought, and then when he bought the place, the fence was there.
Yeah.
And he got broken, he replaced the broken parts to make sure it would be arguably, quote-unquote, "in compliance," and be a fully structural sound fence.
I'll ask you as a neighbor, has that fence changed since you've been there since 1996?
No.
Same structure?
Mrs. Watkins, her and her husband built that home in the 1950s. That was there when I moved in. Bob and Tracy moved there after. They kept the same fence. They shellacked it once in a while, but I mean, it is the same fence that it's always been. And like I say, it's never been an issue to my knowledge, and I've lived there for 20 years. I don't see traffic being an issue. I pull to that corner every single time. The stop sign gets in the way, that's sitting there more than, you know, and the culverts get in the way more of having to take a wide turn around the culverts than the fence is any issue.
Let me be a Philadelphia lawyer, if I may. Just ask you two questions.
Sure.
Placement, same, exact?
Same, exactly. They just picked the old...
And structure, same?
Same split rails, same materials. Nothing substantially changed.
I don't think so. Sure.
As far as the, them repairing the existing fence, you know, in normal circumstances, I wouldn't have a problem with that at all. However, the fact that it's on county right-of-way, there's the issue, I think. And I feel that it doesn't prohibit us to go ahead and grandzoning our variances on property that belong to the county and not to, I think that's, I think that's the issue here. Certainly, repairing the fence is never an issue.
I mean, I guess, if I may...
Any more questions for the applicant?
I don't have many questions for the applicant.
Okay. Go ahead.
Well, just to answer that point, I don't think this rises to the level of a variance. And variance is required when a permit is required, and that's the thrust of this argument is, I don't think you need to make a ruling on a variance if we're all in agreement that this was in fact a repair. Then the town of New Hartford isn't condoning, isn't signing on, isn't going to be part of any law, is saying, "Look, this was a repair. As a repair, it doesn't require planning board approval in order to bless it and make it so. Just the ruling has been, it was a repair." And the town of New Hartford makes it very clear, for repairs, a permit's not required.
That was my question. And I believe Joe stated that that ordinance that you were stating was for friendly and not for residential property. So I think, I think a permit would be required if that were followed today with, viewed upon as residential property.
Well, I say, I have just downloaded the frequently asked questions from the town of New Hartford, and it says, "What can I do without a permit? Make ordinary repairs with like or similar material to restore original conditions that do not affect structural features or involve the installation or extension of electrical or plumbing systems." That is, that, this is from the town website, this is downloaded directly from there, and this is what happened, in, like I say.
Is that very...
I agree with Mr. Quinn. I think that maybe the board should consider whether this was a repair...
I agree with him.
...or whether this was a complete new installation.
Oh, I don't have any...
And, and... Same structure?
Mrs. Watkins, her and her husband built that home in the 1950s. That was there when I moved in. Bob and Tracy moved there after. They kept the same fence. They shellacked it once in a while, but I mean, it is the same fence that it's always been. And like I say, it's never been an issue, to my knowledge, and I've lived there for 20 years, I don't see traffic being an issue. I pull to that corner every single time. The stop sign gets in the way, that's sitting there more than, you know, and the culverts get in the way more of having to take a wide turn around the culverts than the fence is any issue.
Let me be a Philadelphia lawyer, if I may. Just ask you two questions. Placement, same, exact?
Same, exactly. They just picked the old...
And structure, same?
Same split rails, same materials. Nothing is substantially changed.
As far as the, them repairing the existing fence, you know, in normal circumstances, I wouldn't have a problem with that at all. However, the fact that it's on county right of way, there's the issue, I think. And I feel that it doesn't behoove us to go ahead and gran zoning or our variances on property that's owned to the county, and not to... I think that's, I think that's the issue here. Certainly repairing the fence is never an issue.
I mean, I guess, if I may...
Any more questions for the applicant?
I don't have any questions for the applicant.
Okay, go ahead.
Well, just to answer that point, I don't think this rises to the level of a variance. And variance is required when a permit is required. And that's the thrust of this argument is, I don't think you need to make a ruling on a variance if we're all in agreement that this was in fact a repair. Then the town of New Hartford isn't condoning, isn't signing on, isn't going to be part of any law, is saying, "Look, this was a repair. As a repair, it doesn't require planning board approval in order to bless it and make it so. Just the ruling has been, it was a repair." And the town of New Hartford makes it very clear, for repairs, a permit's not required.
I believe Joe stated that that ordinance that you were stating was for friendly and not for residential property. I think, I think a permit would be required if that were followed today with, viewed upon as residential property.
Well, I say, I have just downloaded the frequently asked questions from the town of New Hartford, and it says, "What can I do without a permit? Make ordinary repairs with like or similar material to restore original conditions that do not affect structural features or involve the installation or extension of electrical or plumbing systems." That is, that, this is from the town website, this is downloaded directly from there, and this is what happened, in, like I say.
I agree with Mr. Quinn. I think that maybe the board should consider whether this was a repair...
I agree.
Or whether this was a complete new installation.
Oh, I don't have any...
I have no problem with it being a repair. That's okay. But the fact that it's county property, that's an issue for me.
So what would we be voting on? Whether it's a repair or are we granting a variance?
That's a good saying.
Well, no permit was issued, right?
No permit was issued.
He didn't need one?
So why could this not be an interpretation?
My assistant's contention at the time was it was a new installation, not knowing all the facts. Because the fence does look all new.
But now knowing the facts, what he did, he would not need a building permit?
You know, Mr. Quinn said the structural components in frequently asked questions. What is the structural component of a fence? The post, was that replaced? Yes.
All of them?
Eight or nine, I think what you said...
Eight or nine sections.
Eight or nine sections were replaced, right?
Yeah, because I'm going to say, he went through several...
How many total sections are there?
I'm going to... Do you have any idea how many total sections of fence you've got? Because I never count...
All in the back, yeah.
Six, 17. Sixteen or seventeen?
Do you have pictures of the new?
I do not, no, I did not take any pictures.
So 50% of the posts were replaced.
Well, I go back to what we talked about, the billboard signs. The percentage of repair is the issue that's here today. I don't think we, as a board, I do agree with Fred, as far as the county, the liability of the county really is not going to come into play. I mean, let's look aside that. I think an interpretation is needed here to interpret if that sign has been rebuilt. I don't think a variance at this particular time has even been applied.
Yeah, well, Terry, the application, oh, am I... The application is seeking a two-foot front yard area variance. There's no, there's no interpretation before you. It's a simple issue to you as to whether or not you're going to get, grant the variance. Now, you might deny the variance based upon an indication that you feel you really didn't need a building permit to start with because it's a replacement. But the issue in front of you is variance or no variance.
But don't we need to clarify whether he even needs a variance?
He's applied for the variance.
Yeah, well, I think because he was instructed to apply the variance.
The only way to get in front of this forum was to apply for a...
Well, you can apply for an interpretation.
But he said before he knew the...
It's a 56-foot...
I know, I know.
I agree with Joe.
Joe, I agree with you 100%.
What was that comment? I didn't hear the comment.
It's not a two-foot front yard area.
I didn't say two foot.
Well, the applicant, the notice says, "The applicant is seeking a two, seeking two, I'm sorry, two front yard area variances."
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Fifty-six feet and 40 feet. So that's what's in front of you.
Well, I understand that. When you said two foot...
They could come in for an interpretation, they came in for variances.
Well, I, the way I read it right now, the way the gentleman has presented himself, where we're speaking like he's not here, but I'd rather keep that into our discussion once the chairman goes that way. I don't have any more questions.
Okay. Lenar?
No, I guess I'm, I'm with Terry. I think more than for the applicant, I think I would just need to know if, with this, because of the discussion that ensued with him, whether a variance is actually needed or not for us to bother in our voting.
I, I feel the variance is needed, and I feel that we can't really do anything that's on property that he doesn't even own. In other words, I don't have a problem with that fence. I've seen it for, I've lived there since 1980, 1979. The fence has been there a lot of years. So as far as I'm concerned, the fence is warranted, but on his property, not on the county right of way.
But the fence has not been moved, right?
No, the fence is, I don't know how we give permission to do anything on somebody else's property, even refer a repair.
As part of the discussion, I would agree with that, that we can't give that permission. But I don't know if the determination is whether he could do a repair.
Well, how do we say you repair something on somebody else's property?
Well, how do we act on something?
If they were repairing it, it would be okay, but not replacing it?
But they ran their own property. This is not a county's property.
So maybe I ask the question to Joe incorrectly before. My question was, where does his property begin and the county right of way end?
You provided a survey.
There's a survey attached.
And just to be clear, that property is the courier's property. The fact that there might be a right of way over and across his property is what the county has. So let's make a very clear distinction here. The county does not own that property. My clients own that property. The county has a right to traverse across the property. They have a right potentially, if they need it by eminent domain, to take more of the property if they want to expand the road. But my client gets taxed on that property. My client has a deed that's to his dedicated roads. He owns the center line of Higbee and the center line of Bradley. So it is not the county's property. My client is on his property repairing his fence.
Pat, so the survey that's attached that shows property lines you're saying is incorrect?
No, it shows the county right of way line.
It shows the county right of way line.
It shows the meets and bounds and everything in it.
Yeah, but like I say, every deed goes to the center of the dedicated road.
What I'm saying is, you have a survey, Matt, that shows the property line.
Yeah, he shows the lines, he shows the county right of way.
Right, and it shows .34, it shows .34 acres, 15,240 square feet.
But I could pull the deed. That deed goes to the center line. I mean, you've done enough real property, you know, Herb, so you, you know where I'm going.
Well, no, but I know that the right of way can't be impacted. The whole purpose of the right of way is so that the county would have the ability, if they need to change the course of the road, put drainage ditches, put utility lines. That's why the highway law protects the integrity of the right of way.
Which I, I understand fully. And that's, that's the county's purview. The county wants to wake up one day and say, "Couriers, if I want to move that fence, then I will get my pitchfork and I will go out there and help him move it." So that being said, township can still say, "This was a repair." If the county's got such a big B in their bonnet to fix this fence, that's a county issue at that point. They can't support it, they can't recommend it, I understand all that, but they're not saying no. They're saying, "We just can't say yes." And it's up to the township to decide, if this was a repair, then it was a repair, no permit was required from the township in order to do so. Otherwise, if I say, if the county turns around and says, "Well, we're starting an action against the couriers," that is a county purview. That's totally within their rights, and I would not begrudge them one bit.
I have a question for the gentleman.
Ask it.
If I may, Joe, now, when you turned this application down for disapproval down here, can you read your handwriting to me?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, but not to be insulted, but it's kind of hard to read that.
The fence has been placed... Forward of the frontmost point of home and in the public right of way. Therefore, applicant is seeking two front yard area variances of approximately 56 plus or minus feet and 40 plus or minus feet.
Thank you, Joe. Now, let me ask you, if I may, sir. What he just read, is that the exact location of that fence and the post since 1996?
To my knowledge, yes, that fence is not moved...
And that's what your contestants...
And when it was repaired, it's the same footprint. That footprint has not changed on that fence. They didn't have to move it.
Since 1997.
Since 97?
And it sounds like it's been there...
Oh, longer.
I will defer to you, that, you know, if you've been there longer.
So even longer than the...
Yes.
So we've got 25 years or plus of history, if not more?
Yes.
Okay, that's all I have, thank you.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, you have one more question, and then I'll just listen to everybody else. That's a split rail fence.
Yes, it is.
What's the purpose of it? It isn't for privacy? I don't believe it's to keep anybody inside, any kids running out there or anything.
You're asking me to give an answer to what happened in 1979 when it was put up in the first place? All I know is, when it was damaged, my client, you know, probably one or two options, either to continue to knock the rest of it down, which he didn't feel like doing, or repair what was already there. So as to why it got there in the 1970s, I will claim ignorance on why it started there. I just know it was there.
Basically, right now, there is really no purpose for that fence being where it is.
Why is there a purpose for shrubs? Why is there a purpose for a lamppost? I mean, so the fact that it's there...
Looks nice.
We can tell you that what's out there, they want to try to...
I mean, look, he does have, he does have three young children. It is a nice barrier, you know, if the ball starts rolling, it's a natural barrier to keep his children from running into Bradley Road. I live on Bradley Road, cars drive way too fast down that street for my liking. I have three children of my own, so, so I mean, there is some practical benefit to it.
No more for me.
You got a copy of the, of the right of way? Because I'm the deed, you had the deed.
There is, I have a copy of the deed. There is no right of way in the deed.
The right of way is created when they file the math.
So that would be something separate.
Because you can't build in a right of way. I mean, you, there's, I've dedicated a mile of roads, and you can't build in a right of way once you dedicate it, even though you may own it halfway through.
No.
Couldn't you repair? You can't build.
Don't give them permission to do anything. What I go along with is giving them the easement or the, I wouldn't have a problem in this case with a split rail fence only because of the age of it, just to move it onto the property line as defined by their meets and bounds survey. That I don't have a problem with. But to give them permission, my own opinion, to give them permission to fix something that's in a right of way, I'm not going to...
And like I say, all I will reiterate is, my point is, it's not necessarily a question of giving permission. You don't have to actively say, "I am giving my official blessing on this." If the planning board says, "This was a repair," then a permit was never going to be needed at that point. So if a permit wasn't needed, things get fixed every day in the town of New Hartford without the necessity of permits, without getting the blessing of the planning board. So my argument is the same. The statute, the law says, if it's a repair, it doesn't require a permit, which means any Saturday, you could have gone to Home Depot, gotten what you needed, and fixed it. And it wouldn't require a meeting here with which to do it.
Yeah, but the same...
With the zoning board.
I have a question, I think it has to be for you, Joe. So if he withdrew this right now, and said, "I don't even want to go for the variance anymore," and he did these repairs, would he still have to come to you for a...
It was the extent of the repair, Lenar. It was my understanding through my assistant that the majority of the fence was replaced in its entirety.
I think it was.
Over 50%.
I think it's over 50%.
I thought it was limited to 50% or under 50%.
It's got to be under 50.
No, I thought the gentleman said under 50.
No, it's not.
Well, I mean, I guess, I did not see, and Joe may know better than I do.
I don't.
I'm not as sure there's anywhere near New Hartford codes where there's a bright letter line of 50%. I did not see that anywhere in the statutes. So if there is in the statutes, I will defer, and I will sit right back down and make, let the ruling happen. But I don't believe that's in the town of New Hartford statutes, that this, this magic 50% that we're talking about.
Yeah, there is. That was my first question, if you recall. And I asked if it was recorded, sir. I want to make sure it is. Let's clarify that.
Or something's grandfathered in. If you, if you replace it, or if you take it down, you don't, you lose the grandfather clause. If fences, if fences put in on, on right of way property...
Okay. I say, I, I will state, if someone could point me in the direction of the statute that says there's an actual 50% is in the books.
I didn't bring my...
That's a whole, and we can start doing a computation of how much it is or isn't. I don't think that's necessary. I think practical heads can prevail here. And I say, my client was not looking to do anything except for fix what was already there. He didn't wake up that morning looking for a new fence. He woke up that morning to a mess and tried his best to resolve that.
Oh, I get that. And I, I like the fence, I like where it is, I like everything until you ask me to make a ruling on it.
Which I'm not. That's the beautiful thing about this, I'm not asking you to.
You're saying, you want us to say whether it's a repair or not. And if you want me to say it's a repair, then I can't say that because then I'm making a statement on a particular fence. So for me, it's, it's, and property shouldn't be on.
Our zoning laws have gone through since 96. I think I've been on since '84, back and forth. We've probably made three, if not four, citizens committee changes, so I'm not sure if that section's in there. Are you looking that up? Is somebody looking that up?
I'm trying, I have a little slow on this.
You do believe it's still in there? Okay.
Well, it was. But it was, but move on.
So then you'd have to determine 50%.
Does anybody have any more questions for the applicant?
My question would be, if we're looking that up, is to find out the percentage that was so-called replaced or repaired.
I have a, I have a question for, do you have any comments on, on this particular application, being the town of New Hartford highway superintendent?
If it's on a right of way, the right of way is there for a reason. If I have to put a stormwater ditch in, clean a ditch, whatever, it gives me permission to do so. That's why that right of way is there for the roadway. I, I would not, I don't think I'd ever put something that's not on, in that right of way. And the right of way is there for a reason.
Same with the mailboxes. Remember the problem we have with mailboxes?
So just, just wondering, if, if safe this didn't happen to his fence, because I feel a little ignorant to this right now. So if this didn't happen, and you did have to put in some type of drainage, and it was there, what would you have to do? Remove that portion of the fence?
If the fence was in the way...
And would it be at the owner's expense, or would it be at the county's expense for the town?
That would be the owner's expense.
Because they're already on there.
I know, we're in the practice.
Thank you. Anything else for the applicant? Okay. We'll open it up at this point. Is there anybody in the audience, thank, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody in the audience that wishes to speak on behalf of this particular application? Yes, sir?
Hi. I'm going to speak my mind, but I'm Paul Michoni, I live at 18 Juniper Lane, New Hartford. I'd just like to say one thing. I drive by the fence every day. I see it. I did a nice job, he fixed it. I mean, usually, we're hard on people that don't fix their stuff in New Hartford, which is understandable. But the guy took the time to fix it. The right of way that he's on is on a county right of way, which is probably not supposed to be. But I don't know if it's the town's decision really to make on that part. And then I bring this to, right now, we have a fence over on Pleasant Ave for retention upon, on J.P. Kidwell's house, that I've been trying to remove for three years now. And we still, as a town, have a fence on someone else's property, and nothing's been done with that. We currently don't need to do anything with that because it's not an obstruction. Same thing with this is, I don't think if this time, it's an obstruction to the property, that I don't think we should make him pay at his expense and take money out of his pocket as a resident to do that. So it's just my opinion. I, I think right now, if it's on there, it's done, he fixed it, it was a repair, it looked like a repair, the fence has always been there. To make a decision on something like that, again, to take more money out of a resident's pocket and put him in, you know, in a position like that, I think at the time comes when we need to move the fence, if we do need to dig it or do something, that's a different point. But right now, I don't know, I just, it's just my opinion that I feel, so I just wanted to bring it up, so.
Thank you.
Yep.
Is there anyone else that wishes to speak on behalf of this particular application? Okay. I read the Department of Public Works in the county, and that's into the law, and then And then the ninety-county Department of Planning has two thirty-nine, no recommendations.
Randy, do you want me to read the...
Oh, yeah.
...section? Yeah, it doesn't help, but it's section one eighteen dash one-one-one, non-conforming use of buildings, which talks about the lawful use under any previous town in New Hartford zoning chapter of any use of structure or building. This constitutes a structure, right, Joe. As to reconstruction, it says a building. It doesn't say a structure. It says, "A building, non-conforming as to use, may not be reconstructed or structurally altered during its life to an extent exceeding an aggregate cost of fifty percent of the fair market value of the building unless the use of such building is changed to a conforming use." This section shall not be deemed to apply to normal repair and maintenance. This section shall, this subsection shall not apply to single-family dwellings that regulate this. If a house burns down, we can rebuild it, obviously. But this refers specifically to buildings and not structures. Do you interpret that as also including structures?
Well, it does say structures in the opening section.
In the opening, yeah. But then in the second, it says, "A building, non-conforming..."
And it also says it doesn't require, it doesn't apply to repairs or maintenance. So that whole section doesn't apply for talking about repairs or maintenance.
Yeah.
It's a different section, yeah.
How'd we miss that in the last couple?
Probably my fault here.
No. We'll believe it on Judge Gilroy.
We'll close. Comments, or do we want to go right to the criteria? I thought we'd go right to the criteria.
Wait a minute, though.
Before we go to the criteria, yeah, I would. Because I'm still stuck on, we don't know the percentage, and if he was just replacing and repairing, what...
From what our attorney just read, it doesn't really matter. Yeah, I don't know. It doesn't make any difference for a fence.
Right.
Doesn't make any difference for a fence.
So he wouldn't even need it, and so he wouldn't need to be here.
He wouldn't need it.
He doesn't even need to be here, so do we need to even vote?
Yeah, we need to vote on the variance application.
Right.
What happens after that happens?
Or would it be wiser for him to withdraw the application and just leave it as is?
He certainly can withdraw, but I don't know what steps Joe is going to take.
Well, Joe is...
Is it deemed to repair or...
That's...
Neither with that. It says house.
If he withdraws the application, other than coming back to seek an interpretation, then either you seek enforcement or you know whatever.
But would you need to seek enforcement if it isn't just a repair?
You'd have to go for interpretation.
Well, but it's up to Joe to say if he...
Joe would make the interpretation first, then it'd be...
Well, that was already made. It was deemed to replace.
It was what?
It was deemed to my office to replace.
So then we have to...
But with what Herb just read, the law that I was reviewing, that we always use, going back to size, et cetera, once fifty percent of it went down, you lost your grandfather clause. What Herb says, that only applies to structure, or what is it?
Well, the first part refers to structure, but the second part says building. It doesn't say structure.
Building. So, but it's the same thing, but it's a building.
I really think we're putting too much effort into this. This is where we're trying to put a size nine foot into a size seven shoe. We're just trying to shove too much information. That fence and that structure, as I just believe the neighbor and the attorney, and I don't remember his name, I think it was Flynn, yeah, said, as a neighbor, that that structure has been there since nineteen ninety-six, in his own words. Our own board member says it's probably been there much longer.
Yeah, I agree.
He's not positioning the post anyplace different. I think by us thinking about what the county's going to do, or what the highway superintendent's going to do, is going to be solely how Rick answered it. It's been there for thirty years. It's the same fence. It's the same duck. It walks the same way. Yet if he has to have some type of liability, and what I heard from here today, from the highway superintendent, that it would be the owner's responsibility to obviously replace that fence, remove the fence at that time. I really think we're putting too much into this, because realistically, it's been there for thirty years.
Well, so Terry, that in that case, you would take a vote on the variance application.
That's my point. That's what I was trying to get to.
And I think you, and I think what you're doing over and above that is you're giving Joe some guidance as to the fact that maybe he didn't even have to come here in the first place.
That's my point. Thank you.
If you do that without taking an affirmative action, I'd be happy. If you do that without taking an affirmative action on an interpretation which wasn't before you, other than to give Joe the guidance that he needs, without taking a formal vote on it, then I'm happy.
Sure. If we deny or approve it, then obviously it's our choice. But if we don't, I mean, if we, then it's obviously his choice.
I would have a harder time if they were just putting up a new fence, but it's been there, and to repair something, we'd see where we would be.
You know, I'm a stickler with fences, as you know, as everybody knows here. But this is not what we see throughout the town. This is an improvement, and I'm a stickler improvements. And this is only my opinion. I'm trying to sway the vote here. I'm giving you a very strong opinion on what I see here before.
Okay. Do you want to go through the criteria?
Sure.
Whether the benefit can be achieved by other means feasible to the applicant?
I'd be willing to.
I don't think so. I'm just trying to change the neighborhood character of the neighborhood properties.
No.
I don't think we're in agreement on that. Whether the request is substantial?
No, it's been there. I just couldn't believe in something that was there.
The fact that it's on the same footprint tells me it's not substantial, because it is what it is. It's been there for thirty years.
So you're looking at something different, right? Fireman?
Aye.
You okay with that?
The question wasn't asked, is it impairing anybody's vision, because it is a corner lot.
For thirty years.
It doesn't. Because of the nature of the fence, it doesn't.
It doesn't because of split rail. I know that, but...
Whether requests have any reason for environmental effects?
No.
And whether the alleged difficulty is self-created?
No.
No, it wasn't.
No, it was there.
It was there.
Yeah.
So, somebody want to make a motion?
When are we making a motion?
I know.
Except in the variance.
It's required yard variances of fifty-six feet and forty feet.
So if we're voting to put that on, somebody else can have it.
It's his property.
Let the homeowner worry about that. That's my point.
That is a...
I like to make a motion that we approve the variance that's before us as read, the way it is right now.
Motion made by, listen to the second.
Second.
Lenore?
Second.
Fred?
Aye.
Fireman?
Wade.
John?
Nate. I just can't see voting something. I'm sorry, it's a property.
I'm sorry. Was that you, Nate?
Hi.
Three-three.
Hi.
Oh, hi. Oh.
Four-three?
Yeah. It passed by, voted four to three.
The basis of your right now is that it was a replacement or a repair that really didn't need a permit then.
Yeah, in my opinion, it's a repair.
He's done with you. That's it. We granted that.
Assuming the one issue of permitting in the town.
As long as he does not move those poles any further than he had in the original structure.
As a repair, yes.
Okay, next.
Next.
You're all set.
The variance property should not say that, that being...
This will be tough. This is the one right on the...
The next one.
It's already there. It's already, yeah.
Okay. The application of Mr. Zachary Burke, twenty-two May, very placed in Hartford, New York. Mr. Burke is located in a medium-density residential zone, which prohibits the installation of a fence in the front yard. The applicant is seeking a twenty-five-foot front or minus front yard area variance to place the fence in the front yard.
Go ahead, my turn? All right. Here I am.
We had an L-shaped fence. We closed it in. The fence that was previously there was falling over part of it, so we put up a new Took down some shrubbery that was in the front. However, this is not in front of our house. The part of our house that faces the road is actually the side of our house. The front of our house faces our neighbors, as if the house was put in the wrong way. We got a permit. We put up the fence. We went in line with the back of our house. Here's our existing fence. Here's where it was before. There were shrubs. All behind it, as you can see, is another fence.
So it is our backyard, although looking from the street, it looks like, you know, it is the side yard. However, we have a ranch that goes deep instead of horizontal. So, you know...
I think we're well done there, so we know the... We know the property.
Are you saying the fence, the new fence, is in the exact same position as the old fence?
Except for the front here. Except for where these trees were.
So there was no fence here before?
The fence came to the trees and did not come here, correct.
And it was behind the trees?
No, there was no fence there.
There was a fence behind the trees.
It only came up here to the side, what you're saying.
She's saying it was behind.
There was a fence behind the trees. You can see right here, there's the fence that's at the back corner here. It extended and came up to here and stopped. So when we put the new fence, we went along the same line that was there, but then closed it off where we...
So there was no fence here before?
There was not originally. That was the one space where the fence stopped.
You said you had a permit to do this?
Yes, sir. Except we went outside where we're supposed to, because it's not like we give a variance for it.
This fence is up for it.
So this is two different...
Yes.
Two different permits you applied for. This is the one you applied for, but you didn't fill it this way.
Correct.
It was cut off at the front of the, but you say the side, but it's really the front of the house, because it's on the road on Mayberry. So it was cut off at the edge of the house, but you brought it out further.
Yes, sir.
I don't know, how much further is that?
Twenty-five feet.
Twenty-five feet. So you brought it out twenty-five feet.
So this is what...
From what initially was...
This is where the trees are. The trees were all the way around. Is this the same? This is not the same.
Let's not confuse. This is what they applied for. This is what was approved. You know, this is what they claimed to have.
I left a copy on your desk of one of what John is talking about. You have a copy in front of you.
This is your house?
This is the house right here.
It is the same house. Yeah, okay.
This is the, these trees right here? These trees right here?
That you came out further.
No, no.
I think what John has here really identifies that that was, the one on the right is what was initially granted. There's one here for granted originally, right?
This is what you're... Yes, sir.
Want to state it, uh, May sixteenth?
Right.
With the original permit, where would you have been able to put this? What did you?
Right there in the house. Right here.
And you would have done the... Which our patio extends from that there, so...
Yeah.
That would be legal.
Essentially, if our house faced the other way, it wouldn't have been an issue. It's just unfortunately, our backyard is outside. So, you know, our sliding doors to our patio with our backyard and our garden, we're all up the dog out, it's all right there.
When you originally, when you originally applied for the building permit, why didn't you do it the way you, you ended up, why didn't you apply for it the way you ended up doing it?
I still did apply for variance.
We were under, we were under the impression that we would be able to apply for the variance afterward. The original person from Coase that came as we were building it, or before we built it, that's just how we thought. That's what we thought.
Did you have a permit before you started to build it?
We did, and we had that original permit with...
To do that?
Yes. With the thought that afterwards we could say, "Hey..."
And then somebody told you that it's better to go put it up and then ask for...
Forgiveness.
Yeah. That's pretty much exactly what it is, right?
I guess essentially.
Did you, did you put up the fence? Did you have somebody put it up?
We had to go.
We had gateway.
They did a nice job.
It looks nice.
I mean, the property looks a lot nicer than what it did before, all over.
Gateway really, obviously, should know better. Sure they should. That's what I was thinking when I saw it. But then again, they might have told them too, and they said, "Well, we're going to apply for the variance."
Six foot, wow.
Joseph?
It's my problem.
We're in private room.
Yeah, we're on a dead-end street.
Dead-end private room.
Oh, I'm dead-end street, I'm sorry.
Two things I just want to bring up. One, the fence is still on their property unlike the last application. And two, I forgot the most important point.
The address of the house, no matter how you face your house, is still the front, is the roadside, right?
Yes, yes. My definition in the statute.
The second most important point, I forgot. We've never got a complaint on this surrounding neighbors. I don't know if there's somebody here...
We have two neighbors here.
But no one ever complained about it, and it's been months. So take that into consideration. Where were we? Fred?
Good.
Lenore?
I'm okay.
I understand what's happening.
Well, Terry's question's going to be the obvious question. Why didn't you build it under the compliance that you wouldn't be here? And obviously, I think we heard some comments from the audience out there. Build it, and we shall forget. You know?
I would never forgive.
We just, we just thought it was a no-big-deal thing to get a variance afterwards, since we had the original permit. We've never owned a house before this, our first house.
I understand where Joe's coming from. I've been down that street. I looked at it last month, or two months ago when you were here, and I looked at it again, just to look at it. I just, you know, I don't see it's going to be bothering anybody, and we go through the criterias. I don't see it's going to do. The only thing that kind of upsets us here is when, it's the reason why we have a ZBA. It's the reason why we have laws, zoning laws and stuff like that. Not to scold you, because I'm certainly not in a position to do that, but that's probably going to be one of the things that we're going to think about. I'm sure.
I understand.
We understand.
And thank you for understanding this. Because I would ask you if there was an alternative way to build it, and obviously there was. Okay, that's all. You're asking me?
I'm asking you.
If I was up there, I was at the end of the street. I don't agree with it, but it's up, and I'll be honest with you. If the neighbors and nobody's got a problem with it, I'm not going to create a war.
Kind of reminds me of another fence that we approved one time. I think it's...
It's a...
My, for my, I'll call you Karen after, but I think that it sticks out. I've been up that road, because I used to live right around the corner. I just think that it really sticks out, and it's, when I went up to see it, I said, "Wow." But that's my comments.
You owned the house, I guess.
Karen, any questions for the applicant?
I don't have any questions for the applicant, but I don't know how we granted, after they were granted a permit to do something one way and then changed it. I don't think you can, you can apply for the variance after the fact. I mean, you can do it, but I don't think...
That's how we were explained it to, I guess.
That's how we thought. We thought that it was okay. No, I know. We had a...
I understand that, but I just think it's...
There's a whole...
Obviously, if we knew it was going to cause this whole thing, you know, we'd do it.
I know.
But...
We very rarely grant fences in front of houses. It's happened, but it's very rare. Like the one that was just here. That one was there for so many years. It's a whole different kind of fence. There's a whole slew of reasons that you could support it as a ZVA member. But just to have people... Once we start setting precedents that you can put it out there 20 feet in front of the house or so, 25 feet. Then it's like, well, everybody, well, you let them do it, and you let him do it, and then you let him do it. The next thing you know, you end up with change the law.
I mean...
We're not here to change the law.
Yeah.
Is there something that constitutes the front of your house?
I mean, at the front of the property, it's still good.
Regardless, so...
Regardless of where it is.
The back, it wouldn't matter.
You can turn your house around, it wouldn't make any difference.
We could turn our house around, that's what we could do.
Evidently, your contractor...
Use the old saying, it's easy to ask for forgiveness than for permission.
Does anybody else have a question for the applicant? All right. We'll open it up to the audience. Is there anybody in the audience that wishes to speak on behalf of this particular application? Yes, sir?
Yes, my name is Mark Proznik. I live next door to... On the side that the fence is actually on. I have no problems with the fence. In fact, I like it so much, I promise not to drive through it. It was... The fence is very well-built. They've maintained it, they've stained it. And the section of the fence that is out by the road was formerly where there was 20-foot-high trees that made it a little bit more difficult backing out of the driveway. Now there's no problem. The fence is fine for what it's worth.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak on behalf of this particular application? Yes?
Yeah, I live next door. The good neighbors, the fence is fine with me. It doesn't bother me.
For the record, your name?
Doug Barry.
Doug Barry.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak on behalf of this particular application? Okay, we'll close. You can have a seat. Comments? Anybody want to go right to the criteria? We'll go one at a time. Whether the benefit can be achieved by other means feasible to the applicant? I think that it can because if they would have filed the first permit, they would have had it in here. Any other comments? No?
Well, it's my comment, but you already talked it out.
All right. I'm just trying to change the neighborhood character of the neighborhood properties.
They're saying... That's a matter of opinion, I guess.
It's a matter of opinion. Maybe you want to put down the...
The neighbors don't mind it, so they're made of it.
Whether the request is substantial?
It could be deemed... It's the whole front, so I think it is.
25 feet.
Not the 25 feet, it's the whole side. If it was 10 feet or 20 feet, 50 feet.
Whether the request will have adverse physical environmental effects?
I say I agree, Karen, no?
Probably not, I would say. Terry?
No, I don't think it would.
Whether the alleged difficulty is self-created?
I guess that means yes.
Yes. Okay. So, does somebody want to make a motion?
I'm going to motion to deny.
Second by Karen?